Potentially could change based upon the environment and things that are actually going on right now. They might not only affect this current year's budget to 1920, but also the 2021 budget. So all budgeted items that we have within this coming year's budget are always going to be or continuously evaluated and scenarios looked at as well as the approvals that come before city council. So if there are more things that drastically change within the environment or we get updates based upon things from the state of Michigan, whether it's the Act 51 funds, the revenue sharing, they do have a May revenue sharing conference that occurs. So that will come out and advise all the communities within the state what their expected numbers may be. And then we could potentially make adjustments. We always can or always decide on to approve something or not approve something. Just because it's in the budget doesn't necessarily mean that we are going to expend those funds for that particular item. This year, we did add a couple items I wanted to point out. One is the Veterans Memorial Budget, based upon revenues or donations that are received for improvements to that site. Also, another item that was considered this year was the Safe Routes to School. And that's actually within the improvement plan also, and we'll be getting to that later on in the meeting. The first department that we're looking at are the first items within your budget book. That show their revenues, which shows the taxes, taxes, licenses, permits, revenues, which has to do with the state shared revenue that we're going to be receiving during the years, services for different departments that we have, fines, forfeitures, and miscellaneous revenue. That's everything from funds that are raised through the DDA as well as miscellaneous revenues for police departments or other potential grants. A couple of the grants we'll go over later, one specifically with the fire department is that SAFER grant. The millage numbers that we present are right now are being shown as the same as last year proposed, the same general operating revenues, as well as the debt service and the one mil for the capital improvements. Based upon those budget numbers is how this year's budget was prepared. The following page does identify each individual department. And we'll start out with going through the administration budget. Normal expenses that we have for this year, we did discuss last year at the budget. We talked about the potential for increasing in hours, which we did in the 2020 or 1920 budget for the administrative assistant that went from 24 hours to 29 hours. And we talked about the potential for that position going potentially full time in the upcoming year, based upon needs or based upon what we needed to do within the upcoming year or that person actually potentially applying for grants. We did have in the department, one full-time position with somebody retired. And then we had two part-time positions. One of the part-time positions that was actually the former bookkeeper, that position is no longer there. It was created to be a full-time position for the water department as well as for billing. So right now, we have one full-time position at 40 hours and a 29-hour position. So we did right now eliminate 24, 25 hours of employment. That would potentially help fund for moving the other part-time position into full-time. Each, there are items within each budget. There's not a lot of change within the department based upon the prior year. And we'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have regarding the administration department.
Councilmember Kurtswell, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. The question is, is I wanted to know how you arrived at about a 50% reduction in the legal fees? What, what did you use to make that determination?
I will defer to Lisa for that one.
We had not been utilizing Lisa as much as we did Tim, so I thought it would be okay to lower that. And looking at the figures that Patricia gives me each month, we have quite a bit left in the budget for legal fees.
And I wanted to also know on the OPEB Retirement Healthcare Trust, could you speak a little bit about that? Because my concern has been the unfunded contingent liabilities that we have with both the pension liability and OPEB. And I see now in line item 725, you're now putting in an OPEB payment. How much of that payment is going towards current obligations versus obligations that we have outstanding?
I can start out and then I'll let Patricia finish. The prior years, we were only putting in funding for actual obligations of individuals who were retired for OPEB, the other post-employment benefits. This year, we are also, besides what's being allocated for those individuals for, that are actually receiving benefit, has allocated another $1,000 per employee to be put into trust for future OPEB obligations. So we still have the current dollars that we continue to put in for the current employees that are receiving, and then additional amount. I believe there's over a $500,000 liability, this year's obligation, plus the additional $45,000 is about a 9% contribution that we never did before. It was our idea to put that in and start to fund that for future liabilities. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Well, the state, I mean, thank you for doing it, but the state pretty much told the city, you need to do this.
Well, the city, the state told us that we, or through Nayarit, only told us that we needed to fund $4,000. We're putting $45,000 additional into it.
So you're not putting that much more than what the state is suggesting that you do?
They told us 4,000, we're putting 45,000.
Yeah, so you're putting $500 more.
We're putting $40,000 more.
Oh, $40,000 more, okay, okay.
We felt that this was a good contribution to start to fund that because that is up for us to fund and us to make the payments. And we had already discussed about establishing a trust that those funds can only be used for that particular obligation.
Well, the city doesn't have a choice. So it's at the point now where it's a mandatory funding line item now in the budget. So I just hope that future budget planners remember that this needs to stay in the budget. Have you worked out a plan as to when this amount will be paid in full? Like, are we looking at 10 years? Are we looking at?
Without doing a complete analysis based upon age, based upon retirement dates, based upon similar, like what's done with MERS, we don't have a definitive date because we did not calculate each one of the employees. We would have to do an actuarial study, and then obviously that'd pay $10,000 in order to have that done. But we believe in making this contribution, and that'll prepare us for the future.
Okay.
As long as we continue to fund the current obligation also within the year. So this year, we're not only putting that $45,000, but additional, I think approximately $12,000 or $15,000 in. And that's all we were doing in prior years. We felt this was a good start for the plan, and we'll continue to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Patricia, did I miss anything regarding that at all?
Nope, that sounded great, thank you.
If anyone else doesn't have anything, councilmember Richards, did you have anything to add on this?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Carl.
Okay. In administration, right up at the top there, we got wages and salaries. And we've dropped down a little bit on that. I hope you know what you're doing. We've got a major problem, as I see it, of attracting and retaining employees in our city hall, which we have wonderful jobs with great benefits for these people. And yet, we don't seem to be getting very many applicants that want to come here. I don't know if it's, maybe we don't offer enough money or what, okay? But somebody's better look at that closely, okay? That's all.
Thank you, councilmember Richards.
The next segment within the budget we're looking at is the cemetery. We are going to be laying out the new Section 11 within the cemetery. And we've provided some estimates for grading that new section. We've added $60,000 for this particular year for that. We'll wait to receive the estimates or the bids that will come in on that. We've already started, we did the surveying out there for that within this year's budget. And that'll be the next segment is to start to grade that area so we can start to have improvements done for future years. The next step after the grading and seeding that particular area will be actually setting the monuments for the locations of the actual graves.
Does anyone have anything to add on cemetery?
Yeah.
Councilmember Richards, go ahead.
Okay, just for clarification, when we're talking about the new section, Section 11, is that the vacant land on the south side towards Yerkes Drain? Okay, that's quite flat right now, that's where the dumpster is up at the west end. Is that the piece of land we're talking about?
No, it's actually the section that's in between Section 10 and the area where the community gardens are. It's the area that's cleared out, that is not graded properly for receiving or putting any of the graves in yet. So it's the area that's immediately adjacent to the railroad tracks.
Oh, okay, that wasn't clear to me at all. Have we got electricity and water over there?
No, we do not have either of the above at that location.
Okay, well, just let me say, I hope we can come up with this, because we certainly need to open it up, there's no question about it. But I think also our streets and roads need some attention. Since we've got a little more money to work with, I would think we could throw $35,000 at the at regrading the worst sections and seal coating, the lesser, the lesser alligator sections that are up there. I'm up there about 20 times a year, and that's my observation.
I think that's a good recommendation to do improvements within that cemetery. We realized by opening up that new Section 11, we wouldn't necessarily have to pave another section of road in order to, for people to be able to access it. Because the current road that's between Section 10 and the new Section 11, people would be able to access both of them. But we do think it is important to definitely do improvements in the road within the future there.
Okay, great.
Okay, Paul, I think we're ready to move on to police.
The police department this year, we are looking at purchasing one new police car. Also, itemized within the budget, you'll see an increase is the dispatch fee by the city in Novi for 4%. The police department has also allocated $4,200 for three tasers, and that is actually coming out of the drug forfeiture fund. And Chief Solvik is here to outline other items or be prepared to answer any questions that you have as well.
Lisa, am I on?
Yes, we can hear you, chief.
Okay, all right. Like the city manager Paul said, our biggest expenditure is a vehicle. And it's my intention to never in the future should I come to you and ask for two patrol vehicles in the same fiscal year. I was saying that, and I'm not going to do that this year, but I'm asking for one patrol vehicle. Last year, during the 2019-20 fiscal year, our plan was to maintain vehicle number 231 and vehicle 251. And when shortly after the fiscal year started, we put a lot of money into both of these vehicles. Within the last two years, we spent almost $8,000 on repairs for vehicle 231 and approximately $8,600 for vehicle 251 to repair. So instead of continuing the repairs, we took 231 and reused that as the cadet car, and we made 251 the primary patrol vehicle. Now, what that means is when there's an officer here, that is the first vehicle that goes out. It's driven basically 24/7, it's the first vehicle that's being used. So right now, I am currently down one vehicle because I've had to take 231 and use that as a cadet vehicle and put 251 in as the primary vehicle. So right now, instead of having the six cars, we only have five patrol vehicles. And one of our cameras from WatchGuard is actually still waiting to be installed into potentially this new vehicle that is coming hopefully with your approval. So it's one of the things that I am currently down one, I need this vehicle. I do not want to go down another vehicle. If 251 does go down this year and it becomes more problematic and more expensive to maintain and keep, then I'm definitely going to need that other vehicle. So right now, we have five, I'd like to have that one back in case 251 goes down.
Councilmember Kibble, go ahead. You're muted, councilmember Kibble.
There we are. Thank you. Chris, is that cadet vehicle going to have cameras in it?
No, that vehicle, that one currently does not. We removed, when we took the L3 cameras out of that, it does not have it. It is basically driven by the cadet for council packet deliveries and just jockeying cars and property checks. It doesn't get used a whole lot, and the cadet is usually just driving it.
Councilmember Kurtswell, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Yes.
I had two questions, Chris. The first one pertains to item 702.4, line item, that's for command comp and vacation payout. Could you explain vacation payout for me?
What happens in the P O L C, which is the command bargaining units? They have a option to, instead of using 40 hours of vacation a year and taking that, they have the option of being paid out at 40 hours. It's a one-time deal, a one-time payout during the entire fiscal year. So only the P O A, only the P O L C, the command union has that option. Currently, the P O A M, the patrol officers do not have that option of getting paid out 40 hours. Now, I believe during that 40 hours too, that that one chunk payment does not go toward their final average compensation. So it's not like, for example, an opportunity to pension spike to raise their average salary. That does not go toward their F A C. It's just a one-time payout in lieu of using it during, taking vacation during the fiscal year.
It was my understanding, after speaking with the prior interim city manager, that all union contracts had removed the vacation pay because the rest of the city is on use it or lose it. So is what you're telling me that the P O L C, they still are permitted to take advantage of getting vacation pay?
The P O L C is the only union that does that. Now, currently, we can, both unions can actually carry over 60 hours from the previous year into the next year. But if anything more than 60 hours, they lose it. If they accrue more or they carry more over, they can only carry over 60 hours. So, and during, and also, before they carry that 60 hours over, they also have the option, just the command union, the five officers have the opportunity to get paid out for 40 hours of vacation time. And I believe that was just, that was just agreed to in the most recent contract, in this most recent four-year contract that is about to expire. That was not done in previous contracts, but that was agreed to in the 2016 negotiations.
Well, that wasn't a true statement then, in terms of what I was told.
Well, I can't, I can't explain, you know, I don't, I don't know the, what the terminology that he used or the previous chief used, but I can only just relate information that I know is current right now.
Next, in line item 970, capital outlay, there is a notation there saying that part of the $9,500 is going to go towards a contribution for the purchase and installation of an unleaded fuel tank at the DPW property. Could you explain that expense?
Yeah, I was approached by the superintendent Barney regarding that. And as opposed to, I guess there was some discussion about not using the tank on Dixboro Road, but actually having something inside the city that was closer to use, a all-new unleaded fuel tank. Doug approached me on that a little while ago, and he just asked, because of our, the use of our vehicles, if we would be willing to assist him with that in the funding and outline that in our budget. So after some discussion with him, he basically requested $2,500. And that's what that is, that's, part of that $9,500 is, is part of that $2,500 for the unleaded fuel tank at the DPW on A3.
Isn't it an advantage that you can fuel up outside of a gas station? Is that the reason? What's the reason for fueling up there rather than going to Speedway?
No, that's a good option. I guess Speedway is an option, but we don't have an account with Speedway. That would be something that we could actually look at. I mean, obviously, it's going to be something, it's going to be enclosure, it's going to be locked, it's going to be, you know, the less wear and tear on the vehicles from going down the dirt roads on Dixboro. But the Speedway and the account, that could be an option as well.
Well, no, I mean, you worked it out. I mean, that's a, I mean, you want to work with departments, that's for sure. I was just a little surprised to see that as expenditure, that's all.
Okay.
Thank you.
Councilmember Kibble, go ahead.
I was just kind of curious, are there other departments that would be accessing this tank if it were at DPW?
I'm pretty sure all the departments that have unleaded vehicles, and I believe there's going to be a diesel, but I think Doug can talk about that more so than I can. But I believe all the, all the city vehicles that run on unleaded gasoline are going to be part of that. So have that.
I wondered if that was the advantage is, I mean, if we get some kind of a cost break by buying bulk gas, you know, it certainly makes sense unless it's such an inconvenience that people aren't going to want to get out. If it's a muddy environment or something where you have to try to put gas in, it's not going to be very attractive to a lot of people.
Right.
Is there a price benefit? Do you know, Doug?
Yeah, we, so we purchase bulk through Corrigan right now, all of our unleaded and all of our diesel. So everybody in the city, no matter what city vehicle you have, that's where you get your fuel, is either DPW's yard, right now they have diesel only, an old tank, and the process of getting the new diesel tank at the Clean Water Plant there in Dixboro. The other tanks, it's basically a matter of, we should probably have both opportunities at the DPW yard for just unleaded and diesel. We have both at our facility, but we want to have readily available for everybody at DPW because right now, they just have the diesel there, and it's old, and it needs to be updated.
And most of your vehicles are diesel, or you do have both?
Pretty good split.
Yes, okay, thank you.
Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
And again, that offers the opportunity, this is available 24/7, to the, to the departments, holidays, et cetera. So if something breaks down in the middle of the night, they've got the equipment there. They don't have to load it onto a, onto a trailer necessarily to tow it to Speedway to get it fueled up. They could just roll that right down the street to do the repair after it's been fueled and so forth. Okay.
Councilmember Richards, do you have anything to add on the police?
Well, yeah, just one thought on the, this, the tank setup. Out there at Dixboro, those tanks are above ground, as I recall. And at the DPW yard, if you put an above-ground tank, it would be vulnerable to people stealing the gas because they can walk in from the back end. It's not sealed off completely. Or would they have, as a DPW yard, would it be a below-ground tank with an electric pump on it?
All the tanks, sure, sure, Carl. All the tanks are actually above ground at, at any facility in the entire city. So what we're looking at doing is upgrading what we already have at DPW's yard, up to and including cameras, lighting, better situation, the whole way around. No one's going to be able to access the fuel without being a city employee. That's going to be first and foremost. That's kind of how it already is right at the Clean Water Plant. We just kind of monitor it with a log. We're going to get a lot more 21st century in regards to the fuel.
Councilmember Walton, sorry.
Thank you. I just, I actually had the same question. It sounds like councilmember Richards had, is it's not just accessible to anyone? People, it's monitored, we have a way of entering our code to make sure who's taking the gas. What are we doing to control it?
As of right now, it's basically just a logbook. That's how we're monitoring every single gallon of fuel that's being used. In my opinion, that's not satisfactory, we can do better. So this will be a little more updated because I got bids and got people involved with Corrigan because I had them go out and say, hey, can we do this first? Is this even a possibility? And they said, yeah, this is what you should do. And they gave me suggestions and ideas for the DPW yard that would update for that aspect, police and fire and all the DPW for their equipment to be able to get this all in one spot.
So almost like a, maybe like a debit card transaction where they have to put in a PIN, and then you would know what budget takes it and goes to?
We could do it with PINs, with cards, we could do it with just a regular lock. So it's locked, locked up the same way the padlock is for people now to even get access to the fuel. After hours, they have to go in with a regular pad, all they need is a padlock, open the gate, go in, get fuel, same kind of deal what they're doing at the Clean Water Plant, only we can do it a lot better.
Right, I think that we could do a lot better, especially if you have to put a PIN in, then you know exactly who that transaction was, and you can budget it back to say, why were you putting gas in at 3:00 AM? You know, or whatever.
Doug, you're muted, Doug.
Can I add something to fuel?
Sorry.
I'm done, thank you.
Yep.
Go ahead, Chief Vogel.
So the system that I've seen, multiple systems done, the best one was you put a reader on the vehicle, and then you put a reader on the pump. And that way, that pump cannot fuel anything other than ones without a reader. It guarantees, it's the best system for, to deter theft. Pins can be given to people. You can give a card to pop somebody, a reader on the pump, and then a reader at the nozzle. The intake for fuel is what worked best, and that's what my previous player, what we did, and it worked the best.
That's what we had as well in the city of Warren. We had fobs, basically a fob, you had to plug it in, press one or two unleaded diesel. Way you go, easier for tracking, it's easier for everything.
How much more of an expense is that to equip all the vehicles with readers?
Did not investigate that yet.
Okay.
Okay, does anyone else have anything for police? Okay, Paul.
I just want to point out, at the end of this, all discussions for departments, we go back to something if somebody wants to bring something up or has an additional question. Now, moving on to fire department, some of the things that we did talk about were some grants that we were looking to obtain. The biggest grant of ours that we would be trying to obtain first is the, for turnout gear, we're working with other municipalities to apply for that. We've already applied, that's a SAFER grant, which would fund 90% of the purchase. There is money within the budget that does show the revenue and the expenditures. If we do not get that grant, then we would not necessarily be purchasing it in that large amounts. And then we're going to have to allocate some funds at a future date, whether it's this year or other years, in order to start to purchase the CBAs. The other item is that we were also increasing the pay and some benefits for the fire chief and the deputy chief. We did have conversations, or the chief and I, having discussions regarding the potential for going full-time, the ability for him to stay at, in a part-time and work the amount of hours that he is, is what, is that he likes the most. We are looking at adding additional staff for the funding, the additional shift. And that is highlighted within the fire department budget. It is on the page where it talks about the new shifts for Sundays from 10:00 AM to 8:00 PM, and also Friday and Saturday from 8:00 PM until 6:00 AM, which we have a lot of calls, which now would, people would be at the station, and the chief or deputy chief would necessarily always have to respond to. at the station and the chief or deputy chief wouldn't necessarily always have to respond to. The last big item was another safer grant, which had to do with the potential for funding and, and receiving grants to fund three full-time Fire Department employees. The first year, they would be funded at 75%, the second year at 75%, and the third year at 35%. And that is the last page within the budget document that you have that shows what the reaction to the budget would be if that, in fact, that grant was actually received. And at that particular time, at the end of those three years, you would make the determination of whether you wanted to continue the funding of those full-time employees. And a lot of those things are going to be predicated based upon the number of calls that we actually receive. And now the chief can, Chief Vogel can talk a little bit more about that particular grant and how that all works.
Let me clarify something. I think Paul said that, I just want to clarify. So we, we applied with six other departments locally for SCBA, it's not turnout gear.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry if that was confusing. So if you look at that number, I know it jumps off the page, is a huge jump. We asked for $209,000 or $206,000 from FEMA. If approved, we would have to come up with about $10,000 to $15,000. So that number that you see of the eight is, is not the true number. If we do not get the grant, we would not purchase the SCBA this year. We would have to start over and figure out another plan. There's three critical issues that me and my officers identified. It was the SCBA. They're not, they, they're, they're all.
Chief, it sounds like we might have lost your audio there.
Still don't have it, chief.
It shows his microphone is on. I'm not sure why we can't hear him.
Still can't hear me?
Now you're back.
Okay, good.
Oh, lost you again.
It shows his microphone is on. I don't know why we can't hear him.
It might be your speaker, chief. I don't know if you bumped it at one point, or?
You might need to move closer to his speaker.
No, I keep saying I get, I'm getting muted by the host.
I haven't muted anybody. Sorry. I've been taking notes.
I think we might have lost chief again.
Lisa, this may be a Zoom bomb.
No, I don't think it's a Zoom bomb. I think he's just having a connection problem. Chief, can you try to disconnect and then jump back on?
How about now, can you hear me? Okay, just keep saying the host is muting me.
I haven't muted anybody. Nobody else should have access.
Right, yeah, that's a Zoom bomb.
I don't have anybody in our participant group that I don't know. I recognize all the names.
Here's an idea, maybe we could have chief drop from the call and come back in.
We did.
I think that's what he's trying to do right now.
If not, yeah, he can always try calling back in.
Right.
On something.
He showed me back in.
Looks like he's, yeah. It says he's connecting.
We lost, we lost you, chief. I wonder if you can try calling in on the I would say try calling in on the number. Lisa, is it the same number to use?
It's the, you can, if he goes on, on our website, there'll be an 877 toll-free number to call. And then he'll type in the Zoom meeting number, which is 116-396-286. It's at the top of the screen on the left.
Okay, we'll wait, we'll wait just a minute for him to join. If he doesn't join in right away, we'll, we'll move on to the, to a next one.
In the meantime, did we skip a section or is mine just out of order?
The one was public transportation.
Yeah, I didn't think it was a huge deal. I just noticed that we skipped it.
Yeah, that's based upon the, the contract that we receive every year, and that's the dollar amount for the transportation for the individuals through town.
Councilmember Kittle, go ahead.
Just curious. Robert talked about the number being, I think he said 206,000 or something? For the SBCAs? Or SCBA's, excuse me. My, my paperwork says 190. I was wondering if there's some kind of a misunderstanding?
I think it's to receive 190,000.
Lisa, can you hear me? Yep, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can, chief.
Okay, this is great. Okay, so let me start over. Everybody can hear me, right?
Yep.
Okay. So again, the three major identified issues was the SCBA because they're expired and we can't get parts. And then the staffing. The staffing has become a critical issue. And then lastly, the rescue refurb. The staffing, we have two options. Option A is by adding a Sunday day shift, a Friday night and a Saturday night shift. The, and then continue on with the normal shifts. Option B, which I believe is a better option and cheaper in the short term, would be to apply for a FEMA grant and ask for three full-time non-union employees. The federal government would then pay 75% for the first year, including the benefits, the wages, healthcare, et cetera. The same for the second year, and then 35%. This year alone, we would save almost $80,000. I've got some updated from the federal government. They pay more than I thought they did. They pay for everything, the healthcare. They'll pay up to 75% pretty much the total cost, including the vacation and sick and comp time. And then lastly would be the rescue. I sent some pictures in my proposal. The rescue truck is outdated. And I am proposing that we take the back of the truck off, which would be done by DPW, and then send the truck out to somebody who would put on a poly body, which would hopefully last for many, many years. We would continue to put that body on future chassis. So that's kind of what everything else is. I worked really hard with Paul and Patricia to tie the, tighten down my numbers. It's, it's one thing I've learned since this pandemic is how hard that we're working. I'm so proud of my staff, but I, it concerns me. The FEMA grant, I think, is the best option. It saves the city, like I said, about 80,000 the first year. And it allows us to guarantee 24-hour coverage in this city.
Kittle, go ahead.
I was curious, sometimes those types of grants have an obligation to compare the costs after the three years of funding by FEMA.
Nope, they got rid of that. They got rid of that.
So it sounds as though you're talking about abandoning the ladder. Are we going to be relying on the township to have an aerial then?
Well, so that is, to me, the ladder truck works. We keep putting money at it. It's a great truck. Five years from now, we're going to have to make some tough decisions about that. The township just spent a lot of money to buy a ladder truck. It'll be here in about a year. But right now, it's a great truck. Yes, we have to spend time and money on it. But it works, it's functional. I think we should probably get five, three to five years out of it, and then we decide what to do. I think the, we should.
At times, there's, with the ability to be able to perform, to get on the roof at the high school, I thought that was one of our major obligations for the aerial originally.
And it still is. It still is. So like I said, in three to five years, we will have to do a risk analysis. Will the township be able to serve our needs with that ladder truck? Yes or no? Do I like having a ladder truck? Yes. It's more than just putting up and putting big fires out. It's a great rescue tool. But there's some hard decisions to be made in the future. And I, right now, we have a truck that works. And I'm happy with where we're at currently.
I appreciate that, thanks.
Councilmember Kurt Swell, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Yep, yeah, hi Maggie.
Hi, chief, how are you?
Well, thank you. Sorry, this isn't working great.
That's okay. Good to hear your voice. I know that you're working hard. I had two questions. The first one deals with the ladder truck. Is that, I'm just going to think out loud a little bit. I can't imagine that Lyon Township is going to allow, let, let, let me go back. Let's assume in five years, we do not purchase a ladder truck because, for whatever reason, we deem it too expensive, whatever. Is Lyon Township going to allow us if we need a ladder truck to just bring it over, is there not going to be a reimbursement cost to that? I can't imagine that they're going to purchase a ladder and then, and then all around communities sort of tap into it at no cost. So if we're gonna, I, I mean, I don't know, what, how does that work when you share equipment?
Well, honestly, they've called ours for 20 years and we've never sent them a bill.
Times change, times change.
I agree, agreed. But if the way my world is, the fire service world, I have a need, you have it, you come. We've been doing that with each other for Lyon Township, Green Oak and Salem for eternity. And I hope it continues because it would scare me to think that there would come a time we start billing each other. Now, I have not completely ruled out the ladder truck. It's just, right now, you know, it, it will be something to address in three to five years. I think we'll have to see is the city financially able to purchase one? I hope so. I would love to have a new one. But I think it's something that we need to see where we're at. And if we're financially stable to purchase it. I think it's being physically responsible.
Okay. My next question is, is regarding the employees that are being considered, it's under this grant, this three-year grant? You would have, who would be coming on full-time?
We would post it. Now, I haven't gotten all the details, but the thought process is, I look around and I see what is a working system? And I think, I like the Green Oak system. They have three full-time. One, a day, works 24 hours. And then we would still have during peak hours, which generally is daytime. Now COVID has kind of changed everything, but, and then we would have two people during peak hours. Currently, we have shift, part-time employees, no benefit. So we would have one full-time and then one part-time. Currently, we have two part-time. We will eliminate one of the spots. Does that make sense? Did I say that correctly?
Yeah, I was trying, I was, actually, I was trying to figure out what the business model was that you were using to structure and align delivery of services over in the Fire Department. And, and as you know, I've been a very strong advocate of a full-time fire chief. And that doesn't look like that's in the business model. Is that, is there a full-time fire chief over at Green Oak?
Two of them, yes, yes.
Full-time?
Now, yeah, they do. But here's what I, I feel currently works best is Paul and I spend many hours on this discussing, you know, an increase for me, an increase for my, some benefits. And I am willing to sacrifice to try to get 24-hour coverage. That's how important I feel it is. For example, we are already 50 runs ahead of last year at this time. And last year was a record year. And to me, the goal is to make sure that somebody is ready to respond in the city of South Lyon 24 hours a day, 365 days. I, I'm happy with what Paul and I worked out for me currently. That, that answer your question?
Yeah, it does, because it tells me that the business model you're relying on has a full-time fire chief and we are not putting a full-time fire chief in the model that you are actually following. You said that you like Green Oak. I'm still going to advocate and say that if there was any time in which a full-time fire chief should be on-site, it is during this period of time. This is not going to go away. This is, we're going to have the same issue next year and possibly in year three. A vaccine will not be ready until next year sometime. All you have are therapeutics to lessen and shorten the term. But this will, this will come back. And you're right. It is taking a toll on first responders. And I just think that, Paul, I understand you want an extra person over in the administration building that, for whatever reason. My priority is going to be public safety. That's it. And I just don't see how an additional person in the admin administration satisfies that public safety component that is absolutely critical right now. I, I, I can't advocate enough that we need to find the money for a full-time fire chief. And, and continue with the model, the business model that you have used to build the staffing requirements that you're modeling off of Green Oak. I just don't get it, how you can adopt Green Oak business model for staffing and not make that position and include a full-time fire chief. That, that's, everybody knows my position is on him and I, I support it.
Councilwoman, I, I appreciate everything. I, I do believe that we will be someday at that complete Green Oak model. But right now, I have said to myself, let's build a staffing model that makes me sleep at night knowing that, that somebody calls 911, a truck will get there. Mike, Deputy Chief Weir, works a lot of nights. I work a lot and I, I, I just feel that right now, this is the first baby step in trying to make sure that we're protected. I really appreciate it, I really do, but.
How much, how much more money are we talking about to put this position to bring a full-time fire chief? How much more money is it going to cost?
You, um, doing a national average, probably 15,000 to 20,000.
Oh, for Pete's sake. That's nothing.
There is no correlation between the administrative assistant and this full-time fire chief. The chief and I had discussions because he is working full-time hours right now. He, he told me that he liked the flexibility of being part-time, but working the hours, he wants to bring more people in to be able to take on additional staff. This was not saying that we wouldn't do a full-time firefighter, because as the chief said, I need to go full-time fire or whatever, we're not necessarily adding any time and we're not adding another individual. The chief described to me that he enjoyed the, being the part-time, even though he was working a lot of hours. The chief described to me that he enjoyed the, the being the part-time, even though he was working a lot of hours. If council and wants to give it a full-time or whatever, he'll be here at the same amount of hours. We're not gaining any additional staff. And that's what the chief is trying to say. We will add additional staff by trying to bring people in on those additional, additional times and looking at applying for the grant. And I don't know, Chief, if you want to talk about this or not, is if you felt that one of these positions that you're trying to apply for the grant, if you feel that that would be for you to be a full-time fire chief?
No, because the way the model is built, it would be three full-time employees, non-union. And I think the rate, it doesn't, it wouldn't work. We have to, I'm not sure by the grant, if you can just boost somebody's pay. I think it has to be to take on re-employees to help the fire staffing.
Yes, for staffing. It's not for increasing one person's hours.
Right.
And that's what I brought up about increasing the chief. We made him full-time, we're not increasing any hours at all because he's already working that many hours. He just described to me about the ability to be able to be a part-time employee and not full-time. He wasn't looking at all the benefits, he was only looking at, you know, iron dental and that was about it. I mean, if you want to increase that amount, sure, you put in another $25,000 or $20,000 to make the chief full-time. But what he's saying is that he needs additional people. That, that's what he's looking at.
And, and, and with the model he is proposing, he would get the people he wants, he would get the staffing levels he wants, and we would get a full-time fire chief for 15, 20 extra thousand dollars.
Correct.
Thank you.
Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I think, you know, and, and Rob being very, very delicate about it. You know, he's telling you, he doesn't want to be obligated for the full-time position. He likes the flexibility. He likes to be in it. Sometimes he's working 50, 40, 50 hours a week and sometimes he isn't. But if you were to force that we want a full-time fire chief, you basically might end up being, looking for another fire chief because it might not really be what he's after. So when he's providing that insight and that feedback, I think it kind of behooves us to appreciate his insight and his recommendation.
Thank you, Councilmember Kennedy. Does anyone else have anything for Chief Vogel before I ask Councilmember Richards?
No, I have nothing to say on this.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Richards. Um, with that then, Paul, I think we're ready to move on to the DPW.
Well, I, I think one thing that should be discussed, and Chief, do you want to request of this body to be able to move forward with applying for that grant and include that within this year's budget to try to fund for those three individuals?
Yes, so, I, 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 because it's opening up tomorrow, actually, I just found out. And we would find out after July, is there interest in council to have me move forward? Um, I think I put it at about a 75% chance we would get it. FEMA said that we are a prime candidate of what they're looking for when they fund these. You know, we do have, we have two models in front of them. Uh, maybe they don't like the future costs five years from now. Um, I just think that this gets us ahead of it. You know, we're, we're not, we're growing city, the call volume is up. And I, I just feel that this is, if they support it, I would like to put in for this grant. If there's interest.
Councilmember Dill, did you have something?
I just wondered, um, what are your thoughts on after the three years? I used to work in a position that was fully funded by a grant. And I know when it starts getting to the end there, you start panicking a little bit. But what are, what are your thoughts on funding it after that?
So, the increase, it, it, by year four and a half to year five, it would become cost-neutral. In other words, it's now gonna cost us more to keep these three employees.
Right.
I can't imagine we're gonna get slower. The, the need is there. This is something we can do now with the help of FEMA. Or three years from now, I'm probably gonna be back asking for these same three people. And I think the additional cost, when it's all said and done, and we're paying without grant, would prop, now, this is rough numbers, please forgive me, would be probably about 75 to 90,000 a year, more.
Okay, thank you.
Did that, did that answer your question?
It did, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
Oh, you know, Rob, on this, on this grant, is there, you know, if, if we got to the, the end of the three years or whatever and we say, you know, for whatever reason, you know, the economy goes to, uh, within the tank, we just don't have the money and we say, you know, we really didn't see, derive the benefit from it that we thought we were gonna get. And we decide not to continue forward with it. Is there an obligation to repay any of the money that we've been provided?
If we finish the three years, no. It would be the issue if we decided to lay them off year one and a half. That would cause
Okay, that'd be, it just makes
If we finish the 36-year term, 36-month term, excuse me, we would not be, they, they eliminated that. You must keep them on for a fourth year. But again, I can't imagine
They're gonna let you just try it then. They're, they're paying you to try it.
Councilmember Kittle, go ahead.
Rob, you had said that your estimation would be 75 to 90,000 additional. What would the, uh, what's our starting point? You had talked about 75 and 75 and 35% relief.
Yeah, so I, I, I apologize. I know that gets confusing. So, the cost to take on three new people with benefit, not wages, but the full package, is about 195,000. Now, we are eliminating a shift, right? So that takes off about half of that. So we're, so we're left to cover the other half. So probably about 80,000 in the future, year four, you're looking at our numbers. Changing the ro, the model. I really wish I was sitting in front of you to explain it. And I hope I'm, I'm explaining it. Okay, so, you know, using these numbers, and this includes, you know, additional wages, would be, I, I figured it'd cost us between 80 to 90,000, you, you know, four years from now, more.
Okay, so you're talking about 285 for those three people over term?
Well, no. So it, it, it's 195 to take on the three people. But I'm going to eliminate one of the shifts currently I have, so that reduces, let me get my number so I can make sure I'm saying this correctly. And I apologize that this gets confusing. So by eliminating a shift, we save 140,000. But we're taking on 195, right? So there's an additional 50,000 it would cost us. Plus I figured, you know, raises and cost of healthcare goes up, et cetera. So that's where I came up with that estimate number.
So 50 plus, then we'd add the 95 at the end of that, 75.
So, yeah, I, I, I apologize that my numbers are not clear. I'm not making excuses, but COVID-19 really hit at a bad time for us, for the, for me, for this budget planning. This has been my life for, like all of us, for about five weeks, four weeks, I guess now.
I certainly understand that. That's a rough patch for a lot of people. I had one more question in that, do you have a sense of how many more mutual aid runs we're doing now than what then we had historically?
Um, I would say that there's, it, it, fires are up, right? It's not nonsense calls that we're helping each other out. This is true emergencies. I'd be curious to know what the loss is, uh, fire damage-wise. Um, but I would say at least 25% compared to 10 years ago. And it's because we're growing, not just us, Green Oak, Lyon. Lyon is one of the fastest-growing townships, um, and even Salem.
One of my concerns though, because we're, we're attending to our business, are they growing at the rate they really need to, to provide the protection that they, they should be providing? All of our
Yeah.
Particular, so.
Yes, everybody's made strides to change their staffing model. And Lyon for sure, they've done a great job of, of changing their models. I, 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 do you feel that we're being abused? I don't think so, because I need them just as much as they need us.
Well, and that's, that's the way I'm looking at it as well. I, because I don't think that we're doing it frivolously, but I just want to make sure that, it, it seems like we're first on-site, especially in Green Oak, quite often. And I'm kind of wondering if they're, if they need to step up a little bit to be able to
No, 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 they just, it's just ironic that that's happened, or coincidental, I suppose. I, I would never regret the mutual aids we do. You know, they, they've come to us, Holman Hotel, um, I, 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 I have no regrets on mutual aid. I don't feel anybody's not stepping up. I think we're surrounded by some pretty hard-working people also. And the way that this pandemic, I was nervous a week ago that we were not gonna be able to supply staffing to this city. And both Lyon and Green Oak stepped up to say, what do you need? Do you need people? Do you need trucks? Luckily, Sylvick and I have worked so hard and I think we've made some pretty good policies that we got through it. And I'm back to my comfort, comfort level. But I, I don't feel that we've been abused or overused.
It didn't seem to me likely that you would allow that to take place. I just wanted to get confirmation on that, so, thank you.
Yeah, yes, good question.
One of the things, Chief, I think that may assist in helping make this final decision is to try to do some projections based upon call numbers for not only showing the past couple of years, as Councilman Kibble mentioned, but also for what your predictions are gonna be for the next few years. Because you're talking about adding that additional staff and what potentially we may look like in three years. And don't worry, we're not gonna hold you to the exact numbers, but I think giving them a general idea and how the numbers are trending up specifically, because I know we had talked about your calls are up, you know, 50 calls already just this year and we're just through the first quarter.
Right. So when I came, there was, we ended 2017 with 700 runs. This year, 2019, we did 933. That was, I forgot what the percentage was. I'm predicting that we probably will get to 980 to 1,000 this year. And if some of the apartment buildings that I've seen blueprint are approved, or the new housing, I, I, in three to five years, I could see 1,100 to 1,200 runs, easily. Now, COVID has changed everything. It's hard for me to make predictions with this pandemic we're in. If Maggie is right, um, not sure what the future holds. If we ever get back to normal, I feel that we will get to 1,000 runs, if not this year, next year. And that's a benchmark to me that I didn't think I would see here. And it, you know, it, it, it's a huge strain on us. Did that answer your question?
Yeah.
That you, that was a great job of, of laying out what's going on.
Yeah, I, I think I'm, I'm, I'm pretty proud of the fact, the way all the department heads and all the staff have, I think at first I felt the fire department maybe might have been a little bit behind. But, you know, deputy chief and the staff were just, we got on it quick. We've worked really hard with Oakland County EOC and I'm pretty proud. And I, I think Paul and Sylvick and I have worked really hard to try to make sure that we're doing what's best for the employees.
Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
Okay, I think what I heard earlier is that Rob's looking for, you know, to, to see which way the wind's blowing here and does he get direction to pursue this grant that just opened up, uh, opens up tomorrow so that we can take full advantage of it. And, you know, I think they, we can get the numbers and so forth, but I think we, we ought to decide whether or not we're gonna give them the direction to do it. And I'd tell them to go ahead and apply for those grants myself.
Councilmember Kurtzwell, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, why don't you just do a roll call? Um, I'll make a motion. Um, I'll move that the, uh, city authorized the fire chief to move forward with the application for FEMA grant, um, for the purposes stated in this evening's meeting.
I'll second it.
Lisa, do you want to go ahead and
Um, Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Are we allowed to make motions during
That, that was my concern with this being the workshop.
Because we don't have that particular item as a council meeting agenda, it being a budget workshop. I don't know if we can do that.
It's an open meeting, I don't know why. We, we can amend the agenda to include the motion. You can always amend your agenda.
Taking action like that though, would seem to
Can't hear.
Can't hear you Glenn.
You were cutting in and out.
It seems as though, can you hear me now?
Yes.
It seems as though we were to go beyond a This workshop
Right, now
Then you have the
I'm in favor of it, Mr. Mayor.
I, Councilmember Kurtzwell, I, I, I think we, I, I don't think that's the question. I think we all are. I, I think the concern come, with me is, um, you know, with this being labeled as a workshop and I'm, I'm looking at you, Councilmember Kurtzwell, with your background, um, if, if you feel comfortable going forward with a, a, a vote in a workshop, I'm gonna let you go ahead and, 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 and make that motion. That's just my concern.
Well, the, the thing, you can always amend a, an agenda during a meeting, you would need a supermajority. But you know what, to, to expedite the issue, that's a parliamentarian issue I can research later on. I'll just put it on the record, I'm in favor of it.
I think that's probably the best way of doing this, is that everybody agree that we move forward. The chief will start to investigate it. The budget isn't gonna be approved for another seven weeks yet. We still have council meetings where we can talk about some of these things and we can actually place that actually on an agenda, you know, for actually further discussion if needed. And the chief can get information for all of you.
I just would hate to, to lose the opportunity.
I, I, I understand everyone's concern with that too. I just, I'd rather side on the side of caution and encourage Chief Vogel to go ahead. And then if we have to do some sort of, of a, of a, of a vote on it, we, we can do that later. Sound good?
Excellent.
Okay, excellent, excellent.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, Glenn, you're coming back. It's just unfortunately, you're, you're cutting in and out a little bit.
That's very strange.
You're, you're doing better now though. Okay, really quick, let's, go ahead Glenn.
It was, if we were to, to start making approvals of things without the ability for the public to be able to weigh in during the course of our conversation, I think that that's the line that you're crossing when you move from a workshop to a regular scheduled meeting, so.
Okay, no, fair enough. And, um, I think, I think we got to where we need to get on this. Does anyone have anything else for Chief Vogel? Like, Chief, thank you, you've done a great job of laying everything out. Um, and I know, uh, you and your crew have been, uh, running hard over there, so thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, is, is that Councilmember Walton?
Yes.
Yes, go ahead.
I, I, I just am confused and maybe I missed something here, but we have to make a motion to apply for a grant?
Well, you wanted approval.
Well, yeah, so I, I'm sorry, Ms. Walton, I, I know it's confusing. I guess we have a proposed plan ahead in front of you. There's a cheaper, and I think a There's a cheaper and I think a better plan, but I'm not sure if I should apply for the grant. And then when, if it comes, well, actually, you know what? That's probably the better answer for all this. I apply for the grant when it comes, we will then come to a council meeting and then we can accept it or not accept it.
That was my understanding of the grant's work.
Yeah, I think that now that I'm thinking this through, um, if I will apply for the grant, um, and then if we get it, I will then do an agenda, come to council and then see if that's the way we want to proceed. And that'll allow me to get better numbers so you can see what three to five years looks like. Don't you think? I mean, that to me, Mayor, is that a better plan?
Chief, I like that. Councilmember Kurtzwell, you had something to add? Go ahead.
Um, the only thing is, is sometimes with grants, you need to also submit with the grant, uh, approval of the governing authority that, that they agree.
Not on this one.
Okay, not on this one?
Yeah, not on this one, not on this one, because this would not, we would not be the first city if we decided that we don't want, if you all didn't want to move forward, we, we wouldn't be the first one that that's happened.
Okay.
Thank you for all that clarification, Chief.
Yeah, I, I apologize for my audio fiasco here, so.
That's perfectly fine.
It, it works out fine, Chief. Sorry to make you pace through the house thinking about this, but we do still have to allocate the funds if we are going to prove a, so if it does get allocated prior to the end of the year, we have to determine whether it's this year. But if it's next year, then that would be the approval as part of next year's budget.
Correct, so the way I, if I, if I understand this right, the Plan A that's presented in front of them, we would move forward if they approve it come next month or by May. And then if we heard from the grant people by July, I would go make an agenda and come to council and see if we wanted to accept it.
Works great.
Sounds good, Chief.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Chief.
All right.
Yep, if I can figure out how to get on audio, I will.
I, I would stay on here just for a second, Chief, because we're going to talk about either you.
I'm going to stay on the whole time.
Either you or Patricia can talk about the next item that's within the budget, which is the, uh, funding for ambulance set fund, 346.
Yeah, so, um, I'll, I'll talk first and then Patricia can finish my mess. Um, this is something that probably hasn't been funded for many years since HVA took over. However, it was identified that we probably should refund that line item. And because I put money aside to pay their utilities, then they pay me back. So that's why that, there's a slight change in the ambulance compared to years previous. Is that the best way to say that, Patricia?
Yes, so basically it's line item 920 that Chief Vogel is referencing. And so you can see, we put in for this current budget year that we're sitting in, 2019, 2020, what we estimate, um, expenses will be in utilities and then we will be billing out to HVA for reimbursement on their portion of the utilities. And then we put in the proposal for 2020, 2021. Is there any questions on that?
Councilmember Kibble, go ahead.
I'm curious, are, what's the reason for the threefold escalation?
Well, because you, we negotiated a new contract, whereas previous years they were paying $400 to $500 a year. And last year, the HVA contract came up and now we will be getting about $4,500 from
Does anyone else have anything for Chief on this? Thanks again, Chief.
The next item in the budget is the DPW department. The, a lot of similar costs within prior years. The real difference for this year is one of the items that was discussed was the fuel tanks for, located at the DPW yard. Another item were, um, the improvements to the DPW yard. We want to continue to move that forward. We, uh, received the bids for, uh, the storm sewer and the concrete work, um, for the DPW. And we're, uh, the HRC and us reviewed those documents. We, they were actually due just within the past week. Uh, we would like to move forward on that, but we would have to come before council for approval. The other item that we would look to do this upcoming year is to build a lean-to uh, outside at the DPW garage to get some of the equipment out of the weather to help the, uh, to help prevent the equipment from, uh, wearing away so quickly and to try to preserve it as, as long as we can. And Doug and I are both here to answer any questions that you have, have regarding that, uh, this fund.
Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
Oh, Doug, does that also include, uh, some of the, uh, the concrete bases that we need to get that stuff out of the mud as well? I think there's still one or two places we need to pour some concrete in there.
Uh, yeah, there would be one bay. They're, they're all drying beds. There's one there that would actually be, um, HRC's kind of included that as part of the paving project. So that's kind of a little bit, has to go cart before the horse in that manner, so yeah, it's.
But it's, it's one of the ones that's going to go underneath that, that canopy, right?
Yes.
Does anyone else have anything for Doug in the DPW? Councilmember Richards?
Uh, no, not, not necessarily. Uh, there's things that are coming up that will have to be addressed subsequently, one year, two, second year, third year, to the improvement of the facilities. And I think we're going, going about it as best we can. Some point in time, uh, I think there needs to be another division in the DPW with more employees, as I've said when I was an activist years ago, but that's down the road. That's not, that's not here today. Uh, because our, uh, we need a training method for training our people. Anyway, it's open for discussion at another time. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Richards. Last call, does anyone have anything for Doug in the DPW? All right, Paul.
Next area item for discussion is the Parks and Recreation. Uh, the Parks and Rec Commission has, has done a really good job on, um, and I've been working with them about creating a plan for the future for all our parks. They've really stepped up and tried to identify the needs for the park, improvements for the parks, done a lot of, they've done a lot of visits to other parks to see what's working. One of the items specifically was that, um, discussed was that wheelchair accessible equipment, the original discussion had to do with the swing. The Parks Group have been meeting with several different suppliers and have gone to several different parks to look at the, try to get the right piece of equipment for the park. They wanted to get it in because we, we had the funds. There was a, a lot of good, uh, public sentiment regarding this and trying to move forward, but their concern is that they want to get the right piece of equipment. They've met with the individual who kind of spearheaded, remember who spearheaded, um, the whole interest in doing something like this. And they've, uh, been bringing people. Ask Chief if he can mute his, uh, computer there. Um, sorry, Chief, but also have, uh, in the plan this year to go along with, um, that, uh, the Park, McCady Park and the Historical Village and the Veterans Memorial is to survey that whole area and to try to identify what the potential area is for improvements within the park, the water, uh, the water treatment facility, the Veterans Memorial for future expansion, as well as the Historical Village, after meeting with the Historical Society on potential improvements and things that they would like to do, uh, within future years. So that money is budgeted, um, as well in there. And be happy to answer any questions that you may have regarding maintenance or anything to do with Parks and Rec.
Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
Just real quick, Paul, so, uh, are they, uh, the Parks and Rec Group, are they still looking at that swing or are they looking at, uh, some other, uh, playground equipment? Maybe like the thing I showed you the, from that conference or whatever, or have they made a decision?
They have not made the total decision yet, or the complete decision, because they wanted to make sure they did all the research, because the first discussions they had was regarding the swing. We've had discussions with insurance companies, other parks that are using it, the ability to be able to use it, whether it's better to be fenced in or not fenced. They've looked at spinning motions and then they've also looked at ones that were, um, almost like a large boat where you could set, um, uh, potential wheelchairs in the middle and individuals could participate. What they're trying to look at for something is really all inclusive that where they can feel, individuals who may use that equipment feel a part of the park and not necessarily separate from the other individuals within the park. And that's why they've been keen on, uh, some of those things. And they just, they just want to make sure they're making the right decision, but they've been really great on doing all this stuff. And I, my hats off to them for spending so much time and energy on this.
Okay, great, thanks.
Councilmember Richards, did you have anything to add on Parks and Rec this evening?
Uh, yeah, but, uh, I don't want to take up too much time on it, but I'm, I'm puzzled by why the estimates in our earlier projections were up for the Parks and Rec's budget overall and then they went down. Uh, what was the defining factor that caused that to happen that way?
And I'm not, are you just looking at the capital improvement portion of the budget?
Uh, no, I was looking at, that includes everything from grass mowing to, uh, the bike trails and everything. It, uh, uh, in, in my opinion, uh, uh, we need, uh, some more attention to the, the bike trails, you know? And, uh, uh, I was always under the impression that it was clearly defined, at least to me, that, uh, over at the museum area, uh, as Ron Brock said to me different times, Carl, you've done a great job here, but from here on in, it's Parks and Recs, not historical. And, uh, that they were going to be handling the pavement detail over there, which is a real concern. It needs fixing or else let it keep going to pot, you know? And, uh, cause we don't have it in the historical budget to do that. And, uh, go and tell you, if you're gonna, if you're gonna wait till they repave Dorothy Street, which needs it badly, uh, then okay, but let us, let it be known what the timetable is for some of these things, uh, you know, that are, uh, all under the, uh, jurisdiction auspices of the Parks and Recs Division. Thank you.
And I think we can be looking at addressing those pavement or those parking lots and some of those things when we do in fact start to look at the, uh, what I'll discuss during local and major streets about paving projects that we'll be looking at doing.
Councilmember Kibble, you had something to add?
Yes, please. Uh, I, I think that we need to start getting a little bit more focused too on some of the bridge work that's on the bike path. Uh, there's some real rough stuff around the cascade and that, uh, it's, it's almost approaching the point of being dangerous for people, the, the level of the thing. Some areas that posts are sinking. It's really becoming kind of a roller coaster. I think we're, we should start formulating what our plan for trying to rectify that somewhere along the line would be.
Anyone else for anything with Parks and Recreation? All right, Paul, go ahead.
Uh, the next area is Historical Society. I've met with them several times regarding some of their improvements that they want to make within their area. They are working on planning for the future. I have had several discussions with them regarding identifying what their plan looks like one, three, five, 10 years down the road. And that's what, uh, pushed or necessitated some of the additional survey work that we're doing within that area to include them. Uh, this year they're looking at still making, uh, some improvements, one of the ramps, doing some brick work and, uh, painting the, uh, old schoolhouse this year as well.
Does anyone have any feedback on the Historical Society this evening? Councilmember Richards?
Uh, I agree with everything they've got in there and, uh, I hope we can, uh, keep ourselves organized and focused on it. I got one question here, okay? It was my understanding that, and our, all of our understanding, that where the, uh, Blue Star Memorial is, up there where the, the new area for the Veterans Memorial was transferred to Historical Society from Four Seasons Garden Club, as far as the maintenance and care of that, uh, uh, item, okay? The cultivation and this weeding and everything. Also the sign, the electrical sign and the, uh, weed removal and, uh, fertilizer and one thing or another, uh, was Historical Society's obligation. Now, if you're going to form another group to fund that area, is that taking it away from Historical Society and/or Parks and Recs? Or is it still just a division of Parks and Recs, like a, like a subcommittee or something? What's the, the structure on this? Maybe I'm not clear, I don't know. Thank you. Uh, it's a concern.
I think if we are looking at, you know, making improvements to that area, someone will have to be identified as the leading group for maintaining, whether it's sidewalks, plantings, flowers. And I don't know necessarily who that is yet. Uh, maybe somebody else can comment on that. I haven't had the experience about who's been maintaining what area. Now that the Veterans Memorial is there, where that dividing line's actually going to be.
Let me say something.
Councilmember Richards.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
Uh, I think this should go, go before a regular council meeting if we're going to create another division for the Veterans Memorial. I, the veterans that I've talked to haven't been informed of this and it's mostly spearheaded by the, uh, American Legion, as I understand it, okay? Uh, and they have not been informed that we're doing this. I'd just rather see it, uh, go to a vote that we're separating, uh, and making a separate entity for the, uh, the veterans, new Veterans Memorial in a council meeting, okay? Rather than just, uh, adding it without, uh, any, uh, formal discussion. And that's it.
Mr. Mayor, can I say something?
Absolutely, Councilmember Walton, I'm sorry if I missed you.
No worries, I just, uh, put my little raised hand symbol there, whatever that is. But, uh, my question is, uh, kind of along the same lines as Councilmember, Councilmember Richards, um, I want to see that first responders bill updated. And I don't know if that falls under Historical Society, Parks and Rec, DDA. I'm, I'm not sure which group that falls under, so I'm throwing it out there that I'd like to see that updated.
Hey, listen, it sounds like there's, there's going to need to be some communication between everyone involved over there and how it's going to go going forward. Obviously, I'm, I'm glad it's come up. There seems to be some confusion on who's going to be responsible for what. Um, and so maybe we need to get Parks and Rec, the Historical Society, um, possibly even the American Legion and some folks down the road to communicate and figure out what we're going to do with that.
Right, okay, great.
Does anyone else have anything to add for Historical Society this evening? Okay, great, uh, Paul, uh, go ahead.
Uh, the next item was the Cable Commission. I've been having discussions with the Cable Commission and some of their planned improvements for, uh, this upcoming year. They, you know, have looked at wanting to, um, increase some programming, uh, this year. They, you know, have looked at wanting to increase some programming this year. Unfortunately, it appears that some of the events and things that we were looking at are not necessarily going to be happening this year. So some of those things may change. However, they were looking at, you know, considering doing a playback system. I've had communications with them about the potential for maybe taking that out. But now in discussions is, you know, keeping the playback system in there because of the ability to make changes to what's being actually broadcast on there. I think it would, you know, be important, especially during, you know, times like this, we're not having regular people from the Cable Commission come in and make changes to what's actually being, being broadcast. But they did meet recently and they've made some potential change, you know, some potential changes. Right now, their budget for the total that they had for this coming year did increase to the 95, 49. And that was based upon adding that playback system. But recent discussions with them, I, I think maybe these numbers may be coming down a little bit. So I'll have updated numbers for you after I meet with those individuals on the Cable Commission. Because I just received some communication from them just within this past couple of days.
And just to add a quick note, I know that, I saw it somewhere either on social media or email that they are going to be doing a Zoom meeting tomorrow. So if any of us folks have some questions for them, you may be able to pop in on that and talk to our friends over at the Cable Commission about any concerns or questions that you may have.
Yeah, we want to make sure that we move forward with this. Some of the means at which they communicate things to the public has been great. Stepping up and recording more of the events that we have and putting more programming on has really been a benefit to the community.
Does anyone have anything else to add for Cable Commission? Councilmember Richards?
No, I don't have anything to add.
All right, thank you, great. Paul, Cultural Arts is next, I believe?
Yeah, there's not a lot of changes from Culture Arts. They're still trying to apply for a, that specific grant for, for that sculpture. I've not received any communication recently regarding that. But they're always, you know, willing to update and provide more information. You know, we've had the additional works that have been displayed around town this year. And I think they'd like to continue to do some of those things in the future. Last year's thing with the NASA really took off. People were very interested in that. And some of the items that you actually see within the parks or along the sidewalks also, it's creating more of the cultural aspect that I think the community really enjoys.
Councilmember Kibble, go ahead. Oh, Councilmember Walton, did you have something? Go ahead.
Sorry, no, Kibble was addressed first. I'll go next.
Go, go ahead, Councilmember Kibble.
I was just kind of curious, the, if you drive around town recently, you can see how sun, sun bleached, a lot of those graphics are turning. We need to be more mindful of not having things pretty much exhibited to the point where they completely fail. So I, I love the idea of the program and getting that stuff out and making, doling up the community. We don't, it really doesn't doll it up when everything washes out to be kind of pastel colors and you lose definition. They don't resemble the picture that they originally were. So let's just try to keep a little bit closer eye on them. Thank you.
Councilmember Walton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I wholeheartedly agree with you, Glenn. I think that we don't pay enough attention to these artworks of art that we have all around our town. But especially now with, with the state home orders and people are encouraged to get out and walk. We have something in our community that others don't have. So we want to make sure that we're maintaining it so that when we're out walking around, we're viewing it, we're seeing it, we're appreciating it more.
Councilmember Kibble, go ahead.
I, I don't want to end up trying to blame anybody for that. These things I think are designed to be interior exposure types of things. We've built protection for them, but the sun will whale on anything. UV and pretty low grade prints is going to be rough. So we just need to be more mindful of be, being able to swap stuff out in a more quick routine, so.
Couldn't agree more.
Anyone have anything else for Cultural Arts? Councilmember Richards?
Uh, just to let everybody know that they purchased these through a grant and they don't have all of them displayed. I think they have 60 of them altogether. And it's my understanding they're going to display more of them through the, this coming year here, okay? Uh, and there is a cost to, to, uh, anyone to put them on their particular property is $65, I believe, with the posting and everything. But as Glenn said, the, the sunlight and the weathering is fading them. That's true. It's too bad, okay? I don't know if that's a, that's their issue, I guess. I hope that they can correct something with that. But there's, they have, in other words, they didn't lease these from NASA or some other museum like other pictures have been in the past. Uh, this was, they want, they bought these with a grant. And, uh, they own them lock, stock and barrel. And there's been more of them coming out later this year. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask one more thing?
Certainly, Councilmember Walton, go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Richards, you just mentioned that people can buy these for their property?
No, no, that's not it. They can, the cost to put them in front of their property with the, the posts and the framing, I believe it's a 60 or $65 service fee to do that, okay? As I was informed.
So if, if a community within our, a neighborhood within our community wanted to put one in their neighborhood, who would they contact? And I can ask that as a side question. I can reach out to someone else.
I believe it, I, I believe you'd contact Joe Matusak or, or his wife Josie. But primarily Joe, I believe.
Okay, I'll look into it further. Thank you.
All right, I think we're ready to move on, Paul?
Uh, the next item in there is a new item this year, which was the Veterans Memorial. Um, these items were discussed with me by a couple of members of the committee about what their plans or what they'd like to do this year if they can raise the funds. And these items, the expenses are in here and also the revenue is in here also because it would be done through donations that they want to do electrical improvements on site and also do some of the military arches that are comparable to what's, the one that's already on site there. So they allocated, discussed with me about that's what those funds would be. A total of $11,000, $5,000 for the electrical, $1,000 for the military arches.
Councilmember Kibble, you had something?
I was just kind of curious, who's spearheading the fundraising on this?
Right now, I don't know who is. I don't know if anybody else is, you know, meeting on it. Uh, the former, uh, DDA Director Bob Donahue had met with the individuals at that committee and those, those are the two next items that they were looking at doing. But I have not met with anybody since those discussions took place.
This is pretty critical that we, we don't lose sight of, this needs to be moving forward. So, um, I don't know, everybody put their thinking cap on, see if we can solicit somebody to step up into that role.
Yeah, and I don't know really, you know, know how they were looking at starting that or how they're going to look at soliciting funds. But those were the two items that they felt that were most important. But I know they meet as a group and I don't know how often they meet. But when I, when I know of a meeting, obviously I can express it to all of you and let you know.
Those, those are the improvements though that are really consequential, the lighting and things. What we've got now works, but it isn't really show ready, you know? So I'd like, I'd like to see us do what we can to try to bring that thing up to speed as much as we can. Thanks.
Yep. Councilmember Richards, did you have anything to add?
I agree with Councilman Kibble and, uh, uh, I'll just say at this point in time, I hope Paul can work things out and find out how we're going to, you know, designate this particular new, new addition to our parks and make it a smooth transition, okay? And it's certainly a wonderful thing and, and I'd hate to see a bunch of squabbling about it. I'll leave it up to Paul to work the details out. Thank you.
All right, Paul, I think we're ready to move on to major and local streets.
Yes, and these two budgets, I, I think it's imperative that now that we have, you know, a Pacer study complete, that the city needs to develop the long-term plan for future improvements to our roads. It's local streets, major streets. This would involve not only staff members, council, other members of the community to look at what funding mechanisms are out there, whether it's Act 51 funds, special assessment districts, road millages, general fund to identify, prioritize, cost out and develop a plan for future road improvements for the city. We can no longer just wait or just allocate, allocate funds for one particular road. We need to look at the long-term plan and how we're going to do this because whatever road we decide to fund, we want to continue that funding for other future roads. And I think this is something that council, yeah, with the staff, trying to get the input and develop that long-range plan for the 20-plus million dollars with the road numbers that we're going to be looking at. And I'll be providing council some of those figures in the future. And looking at the majors and, and local street budgets, the majority of the dollars that you see on here are standard items that are included every single year for striping, crack sealing work, traffic signal improvement, signage, you know, salt in what we do with the roads, other improvement, minor improvements that we make, even to storm sewer. But there's not, not the dollar figure in here that we need to make the impact to make the improvements to the roads. And that's what I think that the city needs to do within the near future. And even if the funding isn't available, we have to continue just to move forward and set up the plan to determine how we're going to fund these road improvements.
Councilmember Kibble, go ahead.
Major street isn't, doesn't seem to have the same importance as our local stuff. But, you know, I mean, we're going to have to lean on Oakland County as an awful lot, or RCOC, an awful lot to try to, to get programmed in with some of their improvements or on their calendar, I should say. But certainly our local stuff, we're going to have to really dig deep to figure out a solution there.
Councilmember Richards, did you have anything to add to major and local streets?
Just one, one question. Does Oakland County tell us what they consider to be a major street? Or does the amount of heavy-duty traffic on the street determine whether it's a major street or not? Also, I believe according to my notes here, item 485, but I don't see where that is, okay, on my, it's here somewhere though. A transfer of $100,000 between funds. Could, could you explain that to me a little bit?
Yeah, each year we do make the transfer of funds between major and local streets to assist with, within the maintenance. That's allowed within the Act 51 rules and regulations. We have more, we get more funds for major streets than we do local. And in order to do that, you know, we necessarily, we need the funds to help maintain our local streets. So we make that transfer and this $100,000 is that particular figure. To determine whether it's a local or major street, it's, it's a number of items and we go through the process and the approval through the state of Michigan. And we fill out certain criteria based upon the number of vehicles traveling every day, whether it is in fact, you know, within a subdivision, the width of the streets, you know, other improvements and such. And we would, if we wanted to change something from a local to a major, we would have to follow specific criteria that are developed through the state. So we get funds based upon the number of road miles we have, based upon the factors, based upon the population that are given us, given to us by the state every year.
Can I say something?
Uh, Councilmember Richards, go ahead and finish up and then I'm going to come over to you, Councilmember Kurtzwell.
Okay, uh, just throwing a fact out there. Since COVID-19, the, the amount of traffic on McMunn Street here is way down, 80% probably. But with McMunn Street, with all the tube mill traffic in and out, and when the Rose Company was operating off of Dorothy Street and the Harris Oil Company and Kensington Motors, our Kensington, they're, they're out of business now. But McMunn Street has had a tremendous amount of commercial industrial traffic on it as compared to other residential or other local streets for residential. Somewhere in between, I think McMunn Street deserves a, a second or deeper look as far as funding goes for improvements. Thank you, that's it.
Councilmember Kurtzwell, go ahead.
Just as to the Act 51, uh, it was my understanding that a certain percentage, I think it's 10% of Act 51 funds have to be used on local streets. Is that your understanding, Paul?
Of the total amount we, we receive or the, the funds for, for the transfer? What, I'm not sure what you're referring to.
When we receive Act 51 funds, I thought a certain percentage of those funds has to be used on a local project, a local. That was my understanding because that's part of the audit.
Yeah, and Patricia may be able to comment more on this. But our funds for each one, and maybe most of you are aware of this, if not, it's just a slight explanation is when we identify the total number of road miles that we have for local streets and then we identify total, total number of miles we have for major streets and the factors that are used, they compute to us and we can use it figured in advance. The amount of dollars that we're getting for local and the amount of dollars that we're able to use for major. The numbers that we use for local, whether it's dictated within the act that said you must use at least 10%, I, I'm unaware of that. Patricia may be able to comment, but I know in fact that we will use everything for local and then some from the major, major fund as well.
All right, I'll check into that because I think there, I, it was my understanding there is a requirement that a certain percentage has to go to local. Sounds like we're meeting that local, but you're going to be audited anyway because they, they audit those Act 51 funds, so. Um, so you're aware, yeah, Pat's aware of the audit, okay.
Yeah, I do and I, I'm sorry, is it okay if I?
Yes, go ahead, Patricia.
All right, um, yes, we, we file a report each year stating, it's a pretty extensive report stating what we utilize the funds for each year. And I believe it was a 70/30 split.
Okay, 70/30 split, yeah. Yeah, that, that's a requirement. You have to use a certain percentage on your local roads. And that's why they do the audit, to make sure that, that the Act 51 funds are being spent the way the state wants them spent. So, yeah, okay, thank you.
Excellent. Does anyone else have anything for major and local streets this evening? All right, go ahead, Paul.
The next seven, actually within the budget book, it's, it's switched around a little on your printout. But the DDA is the next item. This item was developed by the DDA Director and the, the DDA Board. The majority of the revenue that is received for this are based upon the property taxes, which has to do with the incremental increase within the district that is within the DDA. And those values are, there was approximately a 5% increase this year for the DDA. Some of the other increases this year have to do with some of the sponsorships and contributions with vendor fees. Whether all those things will take place this year is still to remain to be seen. We know there's going to be, whatever revenue is not received is also going to represent a corresponding decrease in expenditures as well because the events did not happen. the events did not happen. We do have a DDA meeting that is coming up this week. So they will be discussing some of the future for the upcoming year, based upon what's transpiring in our environment. We will continue to move forward with, I'll touch on the hiring of the DDA slash Economic Development Director, which is funded through general fund, not necessarily DDA funds. We interviewed individuals for that particular position. We did the background checks and reference checks. I did make contact with all of the individuals that we did interview. You know, one person did stand out more than the others. But I made the contact with them, because I think it's important that we look at not necessarily hiring up this particular hire right now, due to the fact of the environment and what's going on around us. The, all the applicants that I contacted, or they contacted me, they fully understand what was going on. And a lot of them are dealing with, you know, their own issues, whether it's employment, family, whatever. And they understand that a lot of people are not doing any hiring right now. If we were to bring a person in right now to that particular position, based upon the, close to 50% of the time, they're actually spent working with businesses, and another 25%, you know, working with sponsorships, developing events, and things like that. And the other 25% working with, or spending office time working on those other things, they might only be in here one or two days a week. And they fully understood about the potential for, you know, delaying something like that. You know, I don't want to not hire somebody. I mean, I want to hire somebody for this position. But I think it's prudent for us to look at delaying making a hire and setting a start date when there's so many changing parts and so many things that are going on around us right now. So I just want to make sure I updated all of you on that.
Councilmember Dil, go ahead.
I have a couple of things. One is kind of just a statement. But I know that we look at sponsorship fees a lot. And I know people, if we do get back to normal, are going to want to advertise at some point. But I just, I'm really hoping that we are careful with our businesses, because they're so, it's such a bad situation right now, that we just try to figure out ways to not put as much pressure on getting sponsorships or pressuring people for sponsorships. Because, you know, they're going to be in a bad place. And, you know, we're not going to be able to get that kind of sponsorship money this year. So, you know, even if it's charging less at the farmer's market, if we can handle it, if we can handle the budget, you know, putting more money in ourselves, or something that we could do to show that we understand that they, this is a very difficult time for them, and that we want to support them, I would really appreciate us being able to do that.
Yeah. And I think, you know, discussion at the board, and what we have in a meeting this week, and discussion we're here to have with the individuals that's running the farmer's market also, is we're going to end up reevaluating how we're doing this, and how we are, in fact, funding it. Because there are so many things that potentially could change on this budget. I mean, we're already looking at the first May event for the ladies' night out, that is not going to happen, whether that gets delayed, or we just do the fall one. The farmer's market, that potential delay, do we look at starting in June day to July day to August, September? Right now, we don't know. I mean, a lot of things have to do with social distancing, and to put an event on, and then, you know, have to cancel it. You know, like I said, there's a lot of variables, but I appreciate that.
And just the other thing was the question on the farmer's market. And I know I mentioned this when I was asking you questions, Paul, but I don't remember what it was. I just wondered why we are looking at paying the market manager less than we did last year. It looks like, no, I lost it.
Yes, it was. It was 15,000 down to $12,000. And I think that has to do with what amount of time that the individual is actually spending. And I'll have to look at the exact dollar amounts to see if we even came close to that dollar amount. And that might have been one of the reasons that the DDA Board did discuss lowering that amount. I'm sorry, I don't recall during that meeting what's the price.
Councilmember Kibble, you had something?
Yeah, I was just hoping to make sure that it's important, I think, that we're going to be nimble to recognize when the time to get somebody in there is going to be most valued. Because we're going to have an awful lot of businesses that have been crippled pretty badly by what's going on right now. And it would love us to be in a position, to be able to be as supportive and helpful in getting them whatever they, whatever we can provide to them. So I think we need to be keeping that very seriously in our sights. Okay.
Councilmember Richards, do you have anything to add to the DDA?
No, other than I hope they can resolve the parking issues, okay, that we have faced repeatedly, without knocking down any historic houses like we did behind 224 Lake Street, or Lafayette Street, you know, and then it doesn't get used. Thank you.
Does anyone else have anything for DDA this evening? Okay, great. Go ahead, Paul.
The next item is the Water and Sewer Department. This particular department has the largest expenditures coming up for this particular year. You were all in attendance at our meetings that we had with our engineers to discuss the improvements that needed to be made for water plants, sewer plant, other infrastructures, some of the things that have not necessarily been done over the years that we need to start working on right away. One of the other items that included with all this was the discussion regarding a water and sewer rate analysis. That analysis was completed. And we are going to be getting information for you, council, to look at. Because one of the recommendations is, is in order to move forward with these expenditures and the plan that we're putting together for 10 years, because there hasn't been the increases in the water and sewer rates to try to fund some of these, we're going to need that to fund some of these improvements within the future. We were originally planning on having the individuals from Plant Moran, who did the analysis, come to our next city council meeting to discuss some of those ideas. I think we would still have discussion with Plant Moran. That might not be at this next meeting coming Monday. However, I, Patricia and I did have discussions with the firm, and getting information to you on the analysis that was done. So you can look over those particular numbers, and what some of their plans and their ideas were for moving forward to fund the future improvements. I think we all need to be, and which most of you are already aware, is cognizant of, it's not an opportune time to look at potentially raising rates. We still have to be cognizant of what improvements that we have to make within the future. But I wanted to point out that, you know, some of the recommendations that they were making were substantial enough in order to raise the additional funds that are needed. And that's why you see some of the increase, the sale of water, or wastewater, how those numbers have gone up so much. It was to help fund the future improvements. And those are based upon the numbers that we preliminary received from them, and we incorporated within this year's budget. We feel that those numbers potentially will change based upon how we decide to move forward, or when if we decide to move forward to make any changes to the rates, to fund those improvements. Like I said, we haven't decided what that is. That would all come before city council to make that decision. This was just the analysis that was done by Plant Moran. It'd be happy, Doug and I are here to answer any questions we have regarding that whole fund and all the multimillion dollars worth of improvements that we're planning within this year, as well as the future years.
I have Councilmember Dil, and then I got Councilmember Kennedy, and then Councilmember Kibble. So go ahead, Councilmember Dil.
Just really quickly, and I know I had asked you this question before, but it's not spelled out. So when you're looking at wages and salary, and both the water, and then the water and sewer, especially in the 552, it's over $100,000 more. And I know you said something about it being for maybe a deputy director, or something like that. I know there was a wage increase, but I mean, that wouldn't bring you to that much more money. So I just wanted to ask about that again, and make sure we have it, understand that.
Yeah, part of it was for a potential deputy, which my recommendation would be to kind of put on hold, or at least, you know, for a discussion. Because Doug and I did meet this year, we did discuss, and as was discussed last year at council, regarding the funding for a potential deputy within the future, that was not included within the prior year. And also, there were some changes to Doug's wages as well after the hire. Maybe Patricia can outline what some of the numbers are, and how they're reflected in this coming year's budget compared to the prior year.
In comparison to what was budgeted for 2019, 2020, Paul stated, we have the deputy director position, which is put in there, as well as some wage adjustments for our current Director Superintendent Varney, who I believe when the budget was originally approved for 2019, 2020, that amount was a little bit lower. So that is showing a little bit of the increase. We also have put in a 2.5% wage increase for current employees in that department. So that would also generate into that line item. And if you can look over to the audited numbers, all the way to the left for 2018, 2019, that number's a little bit closer to what we actually spent in the prior year. So I think, I think that the number that we've projected for both of those line items, for 556, and then for 557, for that wages and salary account line 702, is a little more accurate of where we're going to end the year, as opposed to what was put into 2019, 2020. Paul, do you have anything you want to add to that, or?
So that would have been just our, our wrong, as far as developing a closer number for the current 1920 year compared to the 1819. So part of it's that adjustment, part of it's the new position, part of it's, you know, the number that we put in there for potential increases as well. But this position is also, Doug and I have had conversations about it as well, is, you know, do we move forward, do we not move forward? But it's, you know, when we're prepared, and if we decide that we want to move forward with the hiring of that position, we do that. But right now is not a good time to do that.
Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, and Paul, I appreciate your sensitivity to the change in the rate structure at this particular time, and with everything that's being faced by the residents and the city. By the same token, you know, we don't know what the numbers are, not sure exactly when we're going to have those numbers available. But I think initially, it was thought that the first year is something would be a pretty significant step change in the rate, and then some sort of a flatline incremental increase going forward. You know, we'll take a look at it, and just, I just ask Doug to take a look at, I'm just preaching to the choir, I know that, you know, maybe that first year's increase is a little more modest. And then we do a risk analysis, truly what needs to be done the first year, second year, and so forth, to phase that in, if there's any way to do that, to make it a little bit easier on the residents at this time.
All right. And then Councilmember Kibble, you had something to add?
Yeah, I agree with that. I hope we can be a little bit prudent on what the escalation needs to be right out of the gates, and sort of step up as things start to get a little bit more robust. There was a section I had asked you about, Paul, on 675.4 in revenues, there was $365,400. It just fell off the map. I was wondering what, where that was.
Yeah, Patricia, can you comment on that? I know I...
You can't hear you.
All right, I double muted myself. Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Okay, I apologize, Councilmember Kibble. I have been looking into that, and I don't have a definitive answer yet, but I will get that to you this week.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Kurtzwell, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, one of the things that I did highlight, it was in the water and sewer operations was in the revenue. And it's been partially answered why there was the jump from 2019 to 220. Where was this increase coming from? I couldn't gauge whether it was coming from an estimation of increase in volume, or whether it was coming from an increase in the rate. So this, so I assume that this jump in here is now related to a rate increase and not a volume increase. Is that true?
That's correct.
Okay. I also want to let you know that when I was at the conference for municipal budgeting, in fact, Plant Moran actually gave the talk on water utilities. It was just, it was a fabulous talk. It was probably the best talk that happened the whole weekend, was that talk on rates. And it was great to have other communities that were there. The Flint community was there. And they were very, very informative as to what happens when you do not properly fund your water department, when you do not properly watch your numbers, when you sort of take into consideration things like, let's be easy on the residents, which I'm all in favor of. However, their focus was, you need to understand what you have in your arms. What you have is a public utility. This is a commodity. This relates to public health. And to cheapen, or to lessen, any attempt to improve this commodity at this time, I can't support. So I think whatever the rate increase is, if it's the max, I say, get it. I take a look at the, at the fund balances. The fund balance in here, let me see, the beginning fund balance is about 5.1 million. You're estimating revenues of about 3.5, expenditures about 6.1. You were going to come out of this with a ending net position in your fund balance of about $2.5 million. That's nothing. That is nothing. Where are you going to get the money to fund all the things that haven't been done over there in that water department for years? And I understand, we're playing catch-up. I get it. The timing's not good. I get it. But I, if we need to do an increase to get this revenue in place, the 1.4, the 1 point, or whatever in the proposed budget, I, I think you got to do it. We're not increasing property taxes. So the only increase is going to be on the water side. And when you look at it, it's the sale of wastewater, that rate goes up. The sale to the tube mill, that rate goes up. Sale of water, the only real increase that will affect me, the consumer, will be the one on 642-2. The other one's going to be absorbed by the tube mill, and the other one's going to be the sale of wastewater. So I think we have not funded the water department to the levels that we should have. We're playing catch-up. It's unfortunate. But that's where we're at. Additionally, Paul, when do you think you're going to have the policy for the tap-in revenues, how that's going to be split?
I'll let Patricia comment on that. We've had discussions with our auditors regarding that, and how the original policy, I believe, that was developed in, I think it was 1989, that developed a total. And I'm not sure why, in fact, it was originally developed to say certain numbers should go to infrastructure, or not go to infrastructure, because, or for improvements to the system, when that is an enterprise fund, and all the funds go to, you know, running the department, whether you decide that you want to make it for, you know, improvements, or department, or whatever it may be. My recommendation, you know, based upon, you know, discussions that we had with the auditor, and as well as Patricia, that maybe we're looking not even having that particular policy, rescinding that particular policy, identifying funds that we already have within that enterprise funds, that can be used for, used for improvements. We shouldn't... be used for, used for improvements. We shouldn't necessarily just restrict it to only be used for improvements or staffing or whatever it may be. We're not using, as you can see, based upon wages within that department, that it's all going to, to fund wages. But that's just, you know, preliminary thoughts based upon the discussion that we have them. And I'm not sure, Patricia, if you had anything else that you wanted to add to that.
No, the only thing I wanted to add was just that at, at the, as of the last audit, we were splitting roughly 60, 40% with the fees. And so if we go back to the 1989 resolution, talking about taking 80% of the tap-ins and splitting it, you know, it's just a matter of if you want to continue with the policy that way or, or as Paul recommended, is it even necessary to keep having a policy of this matter and just putting all of the funds into that budget and using it as needed?
Well, I think, I, I'm just, I don't know why it was put in there, but from the seminar that we attended, the, the, there is the temptation when you start dealing with enterprise funds to put them towards things that the money shouldn't necessarily be going to. And, and I think that the, I'm just giving the pros and the cons of the policy, is that the policy restricts government's ability to use those funds for salaries, wages, benefits, and to ensure that there is some funding source that is, that is online and going to the improvement of the facility. So that's the pro of the policy. Other communities have these policies. I, I, you know, I'm just, I'm just letting you know, and some communities didn't because they had different ways in which they were managing some of their finances for their, their water, their water, their water plant. But, but Flint really made a case for, you have to get very serious about funding a commodity that you own. And we own that water and sewer plant. And, and we haven't been managing it well. I mean, the numbers speak for themselves. So I will support a, whatever Plant Moran is asking for the first year.
Councilmember Kennedy, I'm coming to you. And then Councilmember Kibble afterwards.
In the interest of accuracy, nobody advocated to do anything or not do something that would put the safety of the water system at risk for the residents of this city. What was stated was to take a serious look at what needs to be done and the timing for doing it, whether all of the projects need to start simultaneously or they can be addressed in a phased approach. None of which would impact or affect or adversely the safety of the water for the, for the city and its residents. And take exception to the inference that's kind of been provided there that we would shortcut the expenditures and put the residents at risk. Never, never would the city do that.
Well, I would disagree with you because that water department, that water department is a mess. We have not, we have, we have not dealt with the water department in a planned manner. We are now placing, we are now placing catch-up. I, I looked at that.
And how many councils have done that? I'll kick that can down the road. We are going to do it. And listening to the director, the superintendent for utilities, he has a plan to do that. All I'm saying is, does it all have to happen simultaneously? Or can these projects be addressed on a phased approach? We went through this a few weeks ago when HRC came to the council meeting and put up four projects that they want to kick off right here and now. The filter media change, the induced draft aerator, the ground storage tank, and something else. And yeah, they'd like to kick them all off simultaneously. Well, you know what? Doug took a look at it and said, you know what? The city can handle two of those projects. We don't need HRC's involvement in it. And we'll take HRC's, you know, you know, application to work on the other two. All I'm asking and all Doug is going to do is look at it intelligently and make an evaluation based on his experience as to what is the most appropriate approach to addressing those issues.
Councilmember Kurtzwell, I'm going to come to you as soon as I recognize Councilmember Kibble. Go ahead, Glenn.
I don't really have a great deal more to add. I think that, that Steve's probably a little bit stronger on the, the direction that we need to end up moving in. The, I think that the idea that Doug has the, the experience and understanding of some of those platforms that need to be amended. You know, when HRC comes into town, you know Doug on well, everything is getting gold-plated and not necessarily everything needs to be gold-plated. So if we can do things in-house, obviously we can save a great deal of money off of the top from having the oversight of HRC managing all these projects. So that's, that's a good start right out of the gates. It gives us a little bit more leeway and flexibility to be able to, to save up a little bit of money for, to be able to move the next portion of things that we want to amend closer on the calendar rather than further away. If we, the more we can do in-house, the better off we're going to end up being.
Councilmember Kurtzwell, go ahead.
Thank you. I had an opportunity to have a, a third party take a look at the HRC proposed capital improvements to the water plant that were presented to council, I believe, in the dollar amount of about $4 million. And I believe I also spoke with the city manager about that also. And the opinion was, that was not a capital improvement plan. That was emergency repair and maintenance plan. That was $4 million of money that needed to be spent fairly soon. And, and if I went back to that tape and I distinctly recall asking Jesse the question, when should this be done? He said yesterday, today. He did not talk about a planned down the road, couple of years, let's think about it. There was an urgency in his presentation. And if you don't believe it, go back, watch that city council meeting. And that is what I am saying. I spent a weekend with people from Flint and they were absolutely right. You have to stay on top of it. You have to make sure you have the funding. And it's clear that our general fund balance for the water and sewer operations is at a very low level by next year. I don't know what you're going to be able to fix. Well, you got $2.5 million and you probably have more than that in what needs to be done. So that's my comment on water and sewer. It's a commodity. Public health, public safety, we need to get serious about it. We haven't been serious about it for years. We're playing. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Kurtzwell. Councilmember Kenny, I'm going to come to you in a moment, but I just wanted to share with everyone that I'm getting some alerts on my phone that we may be getting some very nasty storms coming through the area, likely the type of storms that we may need to go into our basements. So I'm, I'm not trying to rush us here, but we do got a little bit here left to go. And, you know, you know, I know we're all in our own little world here, but we may have some nasty storms coming. So, Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
Okay, I'll make it quick. I, you know, for Councilmember Kurtzwell's benefit, nothing, nowhere in my discussion did I say we're going to delay this stuff for a couple of years or whatever. It couldn't mean just, you know, delaying the start for six months and maybe there's an incremental rate increase down the road within the same budget year. I didn't say we're going to lay stuff for, for years here. I just said to face the approach. And I just want to make that clear. Thank you.
Okay, all right. Nope. Councilmember Kibble, go ahead.
Just quickly, this is kind of snarky sounding, but typically I don't go to Flint for advice about water.
Mr. Mayor?
Uh, yes, I didn't see who that was.
It's Councilmember Walton, sorry.
Councilmember Walton, go ahead.
Blocked my video for a moment. Um, at this point, I'm going to drop off the call. It's 8:30. I get up at 4:30. I sympathize with our first responders, but I'm working seven days a week and I got to go.
Nope, that's certainly fine. You have a great night. Thank you for being here as long as you were.
Thank you. You guys have a good night.
Good night. One last thing, Mr. Mayor, before we move on from water and sewer. I wanted to identify everybody that we are still moving forward with those improvements that were discussed by Jesse and HRC. The one thing that I will advise you is that, you know, we had budgeted, I think, a million dollars within this year's budget as well as $922,000 worth of improvements within the wastewater system. If we, I, we will not be spending that total 1.9 million. So our starting fund balance based upon the audit that's going to occur as of, you know, ending June 30, our ending fund balance will be higher. It won't be a lot, but it will be higher instead of the numbers that you'd be looking at 1.9 million. Because what we are looking at is our starting figure is always off of last year. But the, I believe the audited figure will most likely be probably in the area of $500,000, at least higher than what, which shows in here. Just, I just, I just wanted to bring up that particular, particular. And that goes for every department also. So it's always based upon the prior year, but it depends on where we're going to finish. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Paul. Did anyone have anything else on this topic that they'd like to add? All right, Paul, let's go ahead and move this along.
The next few items are going to go pretty quick. Chief, you want to?
I wanted to say something.
Oh, Councilmember Richards, go ahead.
I'd like to remind everybody that we achieved a great victory in McCady Park with that new well. I believe they call it number seven now. It used to be number four, with 1,400 gallons a minute capacity when it was flushed out there for a week. We've got a, a good line of, of real fresh water coming in. We have capacity. We don't have to look at another new well, I don't think. But on the treatment end, okay, I think we're set on the, the basics for the, the, the water, the freshwater treatment plant. And I think we're going to move forward with it, okay. But on the sewer sanitary end, Doug has pointed out to me that, and I've been over there and he showed me things, we're going to need regular improvements and it's going to run into the millions. And as Maggie indicated, that things have been let go. Okay, they weren't addressed properly over the past 10 years. And I think we're looking at the next eight years when we're going to have to make expenditures to upgrade our deteriorating facilities over there. But we can do it. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Councilmember Richards. Paul, go ahead.
Next item, Chief, so Vic, I just wanted briefly, you talk about the, the drug forfeiture fund? You're still on mute.
Right about that. We currently have five tasers that are at least seven or eight, nine years old. Fortunately, someone from the border patrol just provided us with 10 brand-new batteries for those old tasers. However, if something were to go down besides the batteries, they're not serviceable. So instead of replacing all five, we just need to possibly just replace three. And I think the ones that we can actually have on, on the shelves, the old model, the X26 models, we can still have in case we need them. But I think the 10 tasers of the newer model are going to be more than sufficient for many, many years to come. The plan is, is about seven or eight more years after getting these new 26P models. We're going to go completely to another model that Taser is already, you know, down the line. So Taser currently has a couple of different models already out right now. The functionality, the toggle switch, the cartridges, the training, there's a lot more into it than just, just upgrading to a new, a new, a new Taser right now. And currently the new Taser X7 is out. And maybe in five or six more years, when these things become obsolete, we can just completely go to a different Taser with a, with a functionality that's different and everything. So, so I'm asking for three new tasers and one new, I don't want to, I don't want to be aggressive and call it a raid shield, but if we do execute some warrants, we do want to have some protection. The current one we have is 20 years old. It's falling apart, very, very heavy of the new line. The new one is streamlined. It covers more protection on certain rounds. And so I'm asking for approximately $4,200 for those, for those units.
Anyone have anything for Chief Silvek on that? Thank you for that explanation, Chief. Paul, go ahead.
Next item is the CDBG. We have reduced numbers this year of $29,552 for the community development block grant funds. That's down from the $37,000 of the prior year. I fully expect that this number will probably be lowered again, but I will wait to see what those numbers are. We potentially maybe just make an adjustment based upon how we're funding or how we're allocating funds between the senior center and Haven for the upcoming year.
Anyone with any feedback on that? All right, thanks, Paul. Let's go ahead and keep this moving along if we can.
Cemetery perpetual care. We do have the transfer to the general fund every year based upon operations within the cemetery that are used for, to offset wages that are used. We still do receive revenues every year. So that difference of fund is basically taking about $12,000 out of that total fund balance we have based upon revenues and expenditures. But this year we are looking at that additional $60,000 for improvements to create that new Section 11 within the cemetery.
Anyone with anything to add to that? Thank you. Go ahead, Paul. Councilmember Richards, go ahead.
As long as we keep our perpetual fund balance in the neighborhood of $600,000, I think we can be a little bit at ease with spending some of the money over that, okay? It's a wise and prudent use of the money to make improvements in our cemetery. It's, it's a gem. It's a city jewel. And that's what the money's there for. And I hope we can use it wisely. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you, Councilmember Richards. Go ahead, Paul.
The next fund is the wastewater treatment bonds. We still do show the current property tax revenues that are coming in and what the expenditures are, the way it's looking right now, based upon the revenues we received. We'll be able to cut this off probably at least one year early based upon the fund balance that we have.
Anyone with anything on that? Great, thanks, Paul. Next?
Next item is the capital improvement plan that we have for the upcoming year. We still have money identified for the paving of the DPW as well as new money this year for the safe routes to school. We did, in fact, put money in there. I've had discussions with the schools as well as the township about the three groups making improvements to the area on Pontiac Trail and Marjorie Anne for the crosswalks and sidewalks going down the particular street and the, and the engineering that needs to be done. I've, you know, the discussions that I've had, I'm still waiting before we decide to move full steam ahead on this. We would need approval by all three bodies signing the contracts and everything like that. So that would potentially be coming back before city council to provide another safe access to, to the school and another safe crosswalk back and forth where there currently are no crosswalks at Pontiac Trail in that area. And there also is the transfer to contribution to land acquisition that was discussed that I mentioned some, to all of you regarding that document I submitted the prior week regarding looking at all the properties that we own. And we can certainly discuss that another night. But the potential is there for contribution to transfer to land acquisition is potentially purchasing property for additional parking within the downtown. And when those items will come up regarding acquisitional property, I'll be bringing that before council.
Great, thank you, Paul. Anyone with some feedback on that? Okay, great. Oh, Glenn, go ahead.
I was actually, I, I wish that Rose hadn't left because in regard to the crosswalk thing, it seems to me that the south side crosswalk at Reynolds Suite and Pontiac Trail, we should evacuate that crosswalk because the, the terminus on the west side of the street, it's going to be very expensive to try to make that so that it's safe. If you take those, those signals offline, it forces everybody to end up using the crosswalk at the north side of that intersection, which is a perfectly reasonable and large enough to accommodate any kind of foot traffic. The, the signals that are on the north-south that cross- Signals that are on the north-south that cross Reynolds Suite on the east side of Pontiac Trail, those work just fine. You get to that northern cross, east-west crosswalk, and it just protects people from getting jammed up when they show up on the wrong side of the street and they're sliding down a hill. So I just think that we should end up investigating what the cost of pulling that stuff out would end up being. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Kivell. Anyone else with anything on that?
Yeah.
Councilmember Richards, go ahead.
In the future, I'd like to see some further explanations on just about what Glenn was talking about, 802-190. Safe routes to school, okay? If this, if we're talking about the Reynolds Suite Parkway location, I don't recall that ever being examined very much. But the one that I was familiar with was the one out on Marjorie Anne Street or near there, near the location of the middle school out there. And there was a lawsuit, as I understood it. We got, we put in 150,000 out there, as I recall, a few years ago. And we got, the only thing we got was a street light out there. And as I understood it, the hangup was they wanted $700,000 for a bridge across drain number two out there, okay? Or, you know, lion drain number two, I think, if they call it. And the school balked on that. Now, whatever the exact shakedown is on the whole thing, I'd like to see a further explanation of the whole thing in a future council meeting from the school board and the citizens that live out in that area. See what they feel about this. And on land acquisition, I'm in favor. I'm in favor of acquiring some more property here in the city. But as far as parking lot, I'd like to see where we need, immediately need more parking space, except for special events, obviously. Cool Yule and the year-end Yule drew in a tremendous amount of people. Those are special occasions. On a regular basis, I've got a question of whether we need a lot more downtown parking for regular business. Anyway, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Richards. Councilmember Kennedy?
Just to clarify for Councilmember Richards, the safe walks to school was the crosswalk at Marjorie Anne and Pontiac Trail. That's what Paul is discussing. The crosswalk that Councilmember Kivell talked about was a crosswalk that Councilmember Walton was interested in putting into operation. Two different crosswalks.
Thank you for that clarification. Paul, I think we're ready to move on here. I'm just concerned, we got a couple of you guys that are not at home, so.
The last two items, really quickly, there's the transfer in for the land acquisition that was discussed within the prior item. And the last item was the actual equipment purchase. And the only item that was within there was the payment upon the street sweeper. That's all I have regarding this year's budget. The one item I still wanted to get met, meet or discuss with you very quickly, we don't necessarily have the discussion, but I just wanted to remind all of you that today I just received an email from the schools, from the interim superintendent regarding discussing about providing financial support for the student resource officer. I just received this email today. Doesn't necessarily have to be discussed at this particular meeting, but if you are interested in having a discussion, we can perhaps talk about it at council. Or if you want to add it in, please mention it.
Councilmember Kurzweil, go ahead.
Real quick, they got by two years without our contribution. Northfield didn't pay into the SRO fund. Green Oak did not pay into the SRO fund. They have had those schools closed since March. They will not open until September. The savings that they are receiving on utilities alone, they should be able to find the money to fund South Lion's portion. They're not putting gas in those buses. They're doing nothing. That is free cash that they can use and forward to the next year. So I just can't support that because that's money that I'm going to ask and say, put it on your OPEB liability. That's another $25,000. I just can't support that.
Councilmember Kivell, you had something to add?
Yeah, quite honestly, I would like to advise the school, school board to consider the idea of putting this funding in their own budgets. They're the only ones that are a taxing agency that can tax the entire jurisdiction so that the equity of paying for these SROs will come from the entire pool of people that attend schools at, or actually that live in the jurisdiction of the schools. So I think that's a much more equitable way to address this concern.
You know, Councilmember Kenny, I know you have something to add, but I'm here at Rumbles of Thunder outside. I know this is a hot-button topic.
Go ahead.
I just, I feel like we should, we've had a very good meeting tonight. I say we call it. Let's let Lisa and Paul and Patricia get home. And we can stew on some of the things we've talked about tonight. I'm very proud of everyone. This was very efficient. I was very worried coming in, but I think it's time that we just go ahead and end this this evening.
Can Doug go home?
Nice job, Dan. Nice job.
Thanks a lot, guys.
Paul, I say you adjourn, Dan.
Yep, yep. We will adjourn.
Stay safe, everybody.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Good evening, guys. Good seeing everybody. Take care.
Sorry for the technical difficulties.
Everybody.
Take care, everybody. Be safe. Great meeting. Dan did such a nice job.